Everybody to take their seats and we'll get ready to go to the next appeal here. Where's my agenda? Did you steal it? Okay, so item number four is the, excuse me, appeal number 2016-949. Ben, you're up.
Yes, this item was continued from May 24th. This is the appeal by Matthew Arribey on behalf of Huntington Park Cannabis Providers Association, appealing the denial of commercial medical cannabis cultivation registration 2016-949.
As I told the chair before this meeting started, the attorney for the appellant in this case called at about five minutes to nine o'clock and said that she'd been in a car accident. And I told her I would convey that information to the commission. She also told me that the appellant won't be here.
I'm sorry, is there an attorney representative or a consultant representative?
She was an attorney until recently, but now she's a consultant.
Okay, because our application says consulting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so the question is, I'm sure that Mr. Arribey expected to have a consultant here to represent him today, and she has not shown.
He is not here.
And he is not here because he was counting on her representation. So...
This was continued.
It was continued the last time because there was some research that could have been done to fix this appeal, and it wasn't available, and they were making efforts to get it. We delayed it hoping that they would be able to get it, and the information hadn't come back. So now, they were on two weeks ago. We canceled and rescheduled because the room wasn't available. So now, we have no representation, and I think that James Arribey, or Matthew, excuse me, should be contacted and be told that he doesn't have representation, because if we have this hearing when he's expecting representation and it's not here because of a "accident", I don't think that's fair to him.
I believe that, I mean, we've given one continuance.
And we canceled once.
And we canceled once. We're all even up right at this point, and I have no reason to disbelieve that there's been an automobile accident, and this is a matter that the applicant once heard, and even if we contacted him and he came in today, he's been expecting his consultant to provide the representation. So I would suggest we continue it another two weeks. The danger is, is if we don't, we're going to get it back again.
Well, and there's also a ban on effect, so he shouldn't be growing now anyway, so waiting another two weeks for his decision isn't going to change anything.
That's correct.
And we will contact Aurora Consulting and the applicant.
We would notify them both, yes, as well as the landowner.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to continue? Well, that's a good idea. Are we discussing a continuance? Okay, so we've been discussing whether or not to continue this, and I'd like to see if there's any public comment on a continuance. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation on the continuance only.
I think we should continue it.
Is that a motion?
I would be glad to put it as a motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
A second.
And my motion would be to continue it to the next meeting as a date certain, as certain as dates get.
Thank you. Do you need to have more discussion? You could turn your mic on if you're going to talk. You're looking at me like you're going to say something. Thank you, sir.
Put the other mic on for you.
I think we have a motion and a second, don't we?
Oh, who seconded?
I did.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Continue to date certain in two weeks.
That would be July 12th.
July 12th, thank you very much. All right, so on this next one, I have a note that says it's going to be continued, or...
We would request that you continue this one. There's been some new information that was just submitted to me yesterday. I've not had a chance to review it, and we'd like to have opportunity to do that, so we would request that this be continued to July 12th as well.
Okay, how's the schedule look on July 12th? Are we pretty good?
Yeah, I think we will be okay.
All right, so discussion on a continuance again?
And this continues as asked by the county, not by the...
This is being...
This is our request, yes. And it'd probably be good to assume that the applicant's here and if they concur with that continuance.
I am the advocate, yes.
Okay. Would you like to make a statement?
I'm okay with continuing it at this time as well. It's possible we won't be back here with that continued time.
That's what we want to hear. Okay, are you ready for a motion?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Would anybody like to make public comment on this? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
And to July 12th is long enough to resolve whatever's going on. Okay, I move that this matter be continued to July 12th.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, commission carries. 5-0. I did. Bocelli, Commissioner Bocelli.
July, I can't be here on July 12th.
Whoops.
I'm just checking why I can't be here, and I cannot be here on July 12th, ladies and gentlemen. Ron Wilson, sorry, that just occurred to me.
Okay, so can we...
Can we do it after the 12th?
No, you were so confident earlier that we wouldn't even have to bring it back. What changed?
I opened up my calendar, actually, and I apologize.
Sorry, I was being smart.
That's okay, I understand.
What's our next?
The 26th.
That would work for us.
Okay, so I am going to reopen and bring back the reconsideration to change it to date certain of July 26th.
I'll sort of move that.
I second that.
Okay, so I have Commissioner Bocelli with motion and Commissioner Ladish with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
We don't have any.
Where are you going, Miguel? He had a break. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break. Commissioner Ladish did not have time to read the notes on this next item, so we want to give him a few minutes to read, if that's okay. Mics? Action, okay. So we're going to bring the meeting back to order, and Peter, are you going to be reviewing this one with us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a request by me and Robert Packenger, the county surveyor, that a notice of violation be filed on a parcel. We've been in contact with the attorney for Mr. Freeman. They're not here today because they're not protesting this action. I won't spend a lot of time going through all of the details of how it was created and why it's in violation. That was in the staff report. The only change would be in the recommendation, and I'll just make my recommendation now, and we recommend that the planning commission direct staff to have the notice of violation recorded against assessors' parcel numbers. Oops. The planning commission find that the development of the parcel is contrary to the public health and safety, and direct staff to have the notice of violation recorded against APNs 5010-56 and 5010-59.
Why is this, why does a violation of the subdivision map act endanger the health and safety?
When a parcel is created, there are typically requirements of access, septic sewer disposal, public water, and when a parcel is created not in compliance with the map act as well as our local code, those things aren't addressed. And so in this case, the remainder parcel of this map that doesn't yet exist is not a parcel that can be sold. It doesn't have access, it doesn't have...
Well, the remainder parcel exists.
No. So there is a remain, so in this case, it was a phased parcel map. Two of the lots have been recorded. The parcel that was transferred was what would be the remainder when the other two lots are recorded. And when a remainder gets sold, it has to go through what's called certificate of compliance, which you can't develop a remainder until improvements are done to ensure that that parcel can support whatever the uses is allowed in the zone.
So it isn't just that this remainder parcel was subdivided? I don't understand that notion. They couldn't transfer this remainder parcel even in total?
That's correct. So had they done it properly, had they recorded the final map or the parcel map that ended up creating this remainder, the map act says that prior to sale, a certificate of compliance is required. We don't review sales. It's a legal lot at that point in time. It just can't be developed. And so they need to get a certificate of compliance on that remainder before we could issue any permits, and it's essentially a one-lot parcel map is the way a certificate works for remainder parcel. So we would look at what would be necessary to develop that with a house. Do they have adequate access? There may be road improvement requirements, or maybe water sewer extensions, those kinds of things. So in this case, we haven't looked at it, and so the assumption, and it's again a requirement of the county code that says that part of the purpose of a map is to ensure that public health and safety are met, we are requiring parcel maps and have established the ability to impose conditions to ensure public health and safety. So by not doing that, there is an assumption of it may not be in compliance, and therefore it could be hazardous to public health and safety, and primarily it's access and primarily it's fire safety.
And this action that, the notice of violation itself, is just a notice and it's no attempt for you to void the...
No, there's no void. Because it's been created, it's been done. We don't have any ability to void that unless we are to go to court and compel the owner to do something, and that's not what we're, all it is, it's a recorded notice that provides constructive notice to anyone, buyer, that you're buying a pig in a poke, essentially.
And do we know if the grantee here has quit claiming the parcel back?
We have, I've got a copy of a proposed grant deed back to, or quitclaim deed back to the original owner.
But that's really irrelevant.
That's irrelevant, yeah, because it doesn't erase what was done.
This is just to make sure that in the recorder's office, there's something putting people on notice that this wasn't done.
Right, that's right.
Due into the subdivision map act.
Yes, and there's several different ways it can be corrected. They could actually file a formal merge document back. They could record the parcel map, or they could file a separate map altogether on that property.
Dumb question, why do we have to get involved?
Because that's what the state law says. It's the legislative or advisory body, and that's you. It would have been a lot easier if I'd just done it myself, but...
Can we take a five-minute recess so that Commissioner Ladish can have the correct memo in front of him?
Yes.
Thank you. Five-minute break.
Another five-minute break.
She gave him the wrong... So we'll reconvene at eight minutes to 11:00, and if you have any questions for the director, please ask now. You have questions?
If I read this correctly, back in 2011, the Board of Supervisors approved the zoning amendment and a tentative parcel map that created, or would create, four 40-acre parcels in the 354-acre remainder. And then there was a change to that in 2013. But my question is, were there conditions of approval that were attendant to that original tentative parcel map, and if there were, were they complied with? Because I'm trying to focus on Commissioner Ladish's question about public health and safety here. It looks like this, either there were conditions imposed back then, in which case the question is, were they complied with, and is there a problem, or there were not, and if there were not, why would we worry about imposing them now?
There were conditions imposed on the parcel map. The conditions were satisfied for the recording of the first two parcels. They still need to be satisfied for the recording of the second parcels.
But those conditions do apply to this remainder parcel that...
Well, there would be no improvement requirements associated with remainder, but what we've actually done is created two parcels. So the other property that was a part of the original part, or the current remainder, so when you record a phased map, you record the two phases, and the rest of the property is considered a remainder. In this case, you could record the second phase, and by complying with the conditions of the map, those become then legal billable parcels, and the remainder would then exist. But what happens here, we have two parcels. One is the property that should have been created, or should have been improved pursuant to the conditions of the tentative map, as well as a designated remainder. So it's not, so when they separated the parcel by deeding off the future remainder, they've also created the second parcel that should have been provided with road improvements and other requirements to ensure public health and safety and all the other requirements of the map.
Do the existing conditions, will those automatically apply to the future remainder parcel?
No.
It's another, it's a whole...
It's another step, another process you need to go through to make that remainder parcel developable.
Okay, so right now, there's no, the health and safety comes from the fact that there is, there is no condition, if this, if the entire remainder parcel were transferred, was, there's no...
Well, it's not just the remainder parcel. It's the remainder parcel and that portion of the property that should have had the improvements made to create it, and to actually create two parcels out of that.
I thought there were already two parcels.
It was a four-parcel parcel map.
Yeah.
Two have been recorded, leaving two more to still meet the conditions.
Meet those conditions, but those don't, but those don't really exist yet, those parcels, those two.
Those, they were, it was created, the two parcels weren't created, but a parcel that consists of those two, maybe a map would have been helpful in this situation, the, and I think there's an exhibit in there, it's a very confusing map. There's a lot of details and nuances with it, but the two parcels that would constitute lots three and, or the property that constitutes lot three and four has now been separated from the rest of the remainder, and the only way that that should have been done was by improving the roads and satisfying the conditions imposed on it with the parcel map. So they got premature in selling off that remainder property.
So three and four, really, from the seller's point of view, they've been designated and set forth? I thought they were kind of...
Well, it's a tentative map. They have the right to meet the requirements of the conditions and record a map to create those two parcels. That's a ministerial action. They don't have to go through any other process other than to meet the conditions and file the map. At that point, those two parcels and the remainder would exist. Instead, they deeded off the future remainder, leaving the 80 acres that would become lots three and four as a parcel, as well as the remainder parcel. So there wouldn't be anything necessarily by having the remainder parcel exist, but certainly the creation of the 80 acres that's supposed to have road improvements and other requirements met would constitute a public health and safety. And the one, I want to just read specifically, the findings required, this is from Title 16 or subdivision ordinance, "The Board finds that for public safety and welfare and for the orderly development consistent with the county general plan, it is necessary to require the conditions of approval be placed upon tentative parcel maps." So that's the basis on which we are saying that not going through the process and not doing, you know, not finaling the parcel map, or recording the parcel map and complying with those conditions has a potential for health and safety violations.
Basically, we're talking about a failure to comply with the conditions as to parcels three and four.
Yes.
In advance of recording, in advance of splitting the property.
Right.
And that's what brings in the public health and safety aspect.
Yes.
And these are pre-existing conditions where were imposed back then when the board first approved any split of this property.
Yes, it was first approved in 2011 and then modified in 2013.
I got it.
So a question for county council. Your memo to us indicates that...
Let me stop you for a second.
Sure.
Attorney-client privilege, so you would need to get votes to leave the privilege before reading for my memo.
All right. A formal vote, or just acknowledge?
I mean, you might prefer to just ask me a question.
Oh, say, something just occurred to me. Do we have an obligation to determine whether the department, do we have an obligation to determine that the procedure, that the actual transfer here that has occurred would be contrary to the public health or public safety, or a threat to the public health or public safety?
I believe the subdivision map act says, if I can see, I need to see if I can find my citation to the government code for that, but I believe it's contrary to the public health or safety.
Would not that include a threat to the public health or safety? Do we have to find specific, do we have to reach findings that...
No, I don't, I don't think so. You just need to, there just needs to be, in order for the planning department to be able to withhold approvals pending resolution or fixing of the violation, there just needs to be a finding that the violation of the subdivision map act that occurred is contrary to the public health or safety.
Okay, I don't, I don't see in this notice of violation that there's a withholding of approval. It's just a...
That's a, so the notice of violation is required regardless, and it serves to give notice. It gets recorded and gives notice to subsequent grantees of the status of the parcel. There is a separate step in addition to the notice of violation that's required in order for the planning department to withhold fees, and that's the finding that is contrary to the public health or safety. It's actually confusing in the subdivision map act whether or not the planning commission is the body that has to make that finding, because while the advisory body or governing body needs to actually approve the recordation of the NOV, it says the local agency needs to, the local agency makes the finding. So there are places in the subdivision map act where the local agency has been delegated to the planning department. We thought, because it's not totally clear, and there aren't any cases describing what's meant by local agency in this context, and since we had to come to the planning commission anyway for the notice of violation, in an abundance of caution, we're asking the planning commission, or Peter's asking the planning commission, to determine that there's also, that the violation that occurred is contrary to the public health and our safety, which would mean that it wouldn't make sense to allow continued development on that violating parcel until he's able to impose those conditions once again and thereby protect the public health and safety. And so I think what Mr. Maurer is saying is that in the county code, it appears that the Board of Supervisors already preemptively made a statement that splitting parcels that require a map to be recorded without imposing conditions is contrary to the public health and safety, or basically they said it's necessary to the public health and safety to require those conditions. And I think that that's where the planning department is asking the planning commission to look at that provision, to look at the intent of the county, and to make that finding that because a division of land occurred without being able to ensure that conditions of approval on the entire subdivision were carried out, that that is the, that there has been a de facto risk to public health and safety as stated by the Board of Supervisors. I think that's what is being requested.
But the finding of the violation of health and safety, or threat to health and safety, isn't necessary for filing of a notice of violation, correct?
I believe that's correct. I believe that you can have, that those are separate provisions. It's whether or not you want to give, do more than just give notice to subsequent grantees. I think the finding is a different, a separate discretionary finding.
And the notice does say that I will withhold any development approval or permits. It's the last paragraph of the, of the second page.
Okay, so it's more than just a notice. It is a, I mean, it's more than just a notice of a violation. It is a notice that you will withhold any development approval, and you don't have the authority to do that unless there's a threat to the public health and safety.
That's correct.
Yeah. And if you feel there's a need for something other than just a general statement that the board, you know, made in their finding for adoption of the subdivision ordinance, I believe that the potential development on a site without adequate infrastructure poses a safety hazard because of the need for adequate fire access.
And health?
Well, it's health or safety.
Fire access.
Health or safety.
Or, you know, ensuring that there's adequate sewage disposal. I mean, these are all standard requirements of any parcel map, that you have adequate sewage disposal and access, and that's why I think the board in general found that if you just allowed land division without going through the map process, we would end up with health and safety issues.
So if this were just somebody's residence, a parcel, you know, and they transferred that, but there's no division involved, none of this...
If it were an existing legal parcel, then you can transfer legal parcels.
Since in this case, the, whether the remainder parcel exists or not, the parcels three and four aren't legally existing parcels yet.
That's correct.
Okay, and neither is this...
Remainder.
...or this remainder thing.
Future remainder, I think is what they called it.
Okay, and so this, this itself would constitute a subdivision, since they don't exist as of now?
That's correct.
Okay. As I recall, this particular grant retained parcels three and four, didn't transfer... As I recall, this particular grant retained parcels three and four, didn't transfer--
It transferred the future remainder while the owner retained the 80 acres. It would be future parcels three and four, yes. And that was the illegal division of land.
Yeah, okay. I see. Okay. And has the, have the parties involved, the grantor and the grantee, agreed not only to the filing of a notice of violation, but have they seen the actual notice and agreed to it about--
Yes.
Your notice of--
Yes, this was all sent to them. I spoke with the attorney last week. They said, "We understand. There's no need for us to show up. Just do what you need to do."
That they know that it's in here that you shall withhold any development.
Yes.
And that necessarily is based on a threat to the health and safety.
Right.
Okay. I think I've got up to date.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. So you pretty much read the recommendation already, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further questions?
No, I'm satisfied.
Does this affect the public access footpath that goes down the gold dredge remains? Can I show it down?
It does not affect anything on parcels one and two.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? No, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back for deliberation.
I'm satisfied.
Thank goodness. Thought I was going to be out of here at 11:00. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll move that to approve the recommendation that the planning department, with considerations of threats to health and safety, that the planning department be directed to have the notice of violation as attached to our materials recorded against the named parcels.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries five oh. Next on the agenda is-- Okay, now I'm going to get confused. Peter, I had a, am I on the right agenda?
Yes, we're on item seven. Actually, this is item seven, and this is an action item to direct me to prepare an ordinance amendment to chapter 1794 relating to fees. There's an inconsistency in the language. The title says that it says to be adopted by resolution, but the text of the provision says by ordinance. We have always adopted fees by resolution, so, and I'm working on a fee update that I'm trying to get up to the board, but we need to have this fixed first.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Just authorize me to process this.
I would just suggest, and I see if you have any objection, is that we add to your recommendation or we put in the motion that the inconsistency be solved by providing in the body of the section that changes the fees be done by resolution of the Board of Supervisors.
Well, I think that's really up to the discussion when it comes time to actually consider. This is just the initiation of it. I'm going to make an ordinance amendment. I will be making a recommendation--
Okay, you're going to correct it.
I'm going to correct it, and you can say, "Well, I think it should be ordinance," and the majority of the commission could change that. So rather than predisposing what the--
I see, okay.
--correction will be, just we will correct it.
Okay.
Okay. Can I get a recommendation?
Taboo.
Thank you. Second?
Second?
I didn't read the recommendation, but staff recommends that the planning commission pass a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amendment to correct the inconsistency in section 17.94.020. And I have a first and a second on that.
Yes.
And I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries five oh. So do we have any informational items?
No information.
It says none. Study sessions, none. Commissioner reports, any commissioners have anything they need to report out on?
I won't be here on July 12th.
Hmm. You're dismissed.
You will be dismissed.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, that means I'm going to have to read the parcel numbers on things.
Okay. Seeing no other commissioners having any reports.
I have one.
I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
You have one?
No, you're still on.
Okay. I would just say that we held a meeting in Arnold regarding community development, planned development in the Arnold community, and we had a very large number of people show up to the meeting, and we kind of took a poll of the members of the audience, and all but five hands went up to remove PD from our area. So Supervisor Olivera has directed us to start putting, we put a committee together that was a volunteer committee of the people that attended the meeting to start addressing, rewriting how we would like to see our community look without PD. So we are currently working on that, and the committee has met twice now, and it has been, the first meeting was hard to get established and get going, but yesterday we met again, and it was exciting and fun to work with everybody in the community. It's going to be a great thing to work on. So that's my report.
Did you ask for public comment during the meeting?
We asked for a lot of public comment. It was, there was 98 people signed in, and there was a lot of public comment. It went on for two hours. It was all recorded. It was a good meeting, and it was good participation from the public. And we promised them when we get done rewriting what we're doing, we'll go back to a public meeting and let everybody discuss it and see it and kind of raise their hands again and say, "Yes, this is what we'd like to do or not." So District Three is trying to move forward with some design review without having the overlay of plan development. We'll see where it goes.
Good preview.
Thank you.
Completing my report from Texas in the Houston area, I think most of you know, but I'll restate it, they do not have planning. They don't have regulations. They just do--
You know what else they don't have? You don't get a grant deed. You get an abstract, and it's messy.
They do a warrant. Really?
It's messy.
They also don't have income tax. Yay! But their property taxes are 2.7 times--
Okay, so reporting out. Are you moving? Are you moving?
Not under those conditions.
Okay. So we can go-- Texas is not on the agenda. So we can go to, this was Commissioner Report.
I thought we were on Commissioner.
That was Commissioner Report. Okay. And we're not taking any action on that. So now we can go to our planning director, Peter.
Well, I'm pleased to announce, and this is really more for the public than it is for the commission, since I've already notified you by email, the draft general, or the draft EIR for the general plan update is now available. The official comment period begins tomorrow, runs through August 13th. By August 13th, any written comments need to be submitted. There will be a public meeting for comments on, I believe it's July 30th. It's in the notice. July 30th or 31st? I don't remember. I don't have it in front of me. But it'll be here, and it's in the notice, and we'll be having, advertising that on our website. Hard copies and CDs are available for purchase and obviously available for the commission and the board members to review. So just wanted to make that announcement finally at that next major milestone in the process.
And I want to take the time to thank you and your staff for working so hard on that and actually bringing it out and getting it on the road to some success hopefully. And I know you guys have worked hard. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You too, Commissioner Booster. I know you worked on that hard. Okay. So if there is nothing else to report--
I just have a question. The procedure will be, there won't be actual amendments made to this from the comments? There will be a separate document saying amend such and such to do so and so?
That is typical, that's the practice. So when the comment period ends, we will need to respond to each of those comments in writing. There will be what's called the final EIR. We will identify--